All right, commenter, please. You have three minutes.
Oh, yes. My name is Nathan and I just want to say good morning. I'm here to address the issue of public safety. First off, I'm what many of you would like to call Antifa. Ooh, I believe that black lives matter, but I also believe the lives of my fellow Shasta County citizens matter. I've been a resident and citizen of Shasta County for over 25 years of my life. I have no criminal record. I'm an ex-member of the U.S. Air Force. I pay taxes. I've never looted or vandalized a single business in my life. In all of my youth, I have never seen more of a threat to our communities than the last year from individuals like Vladislav Davidson, Carlos Zapata, members of State in NorCal, the local 3% patriots, the Cottonwood militia, and obviously Vessel. These are the same people who are led by people like Sally Reposa and her husband. The same people who caused the local grocery store to be shut down and were kicked out by the police because they simply couldn't handle being oppressed enough to wear masks for a couple of minutes. I'm calling to tell you, ladies and board supervisors, to stop letting yourselves be influenced by bullies who get 90% of their rhetoric from Fox News and Facebook, by people who think the only options are their way or the highway. People who will take the Chelly and Churn Creek all day long without ever considering Lark's sperm. People like Vladislav Davidson, who has been harassing local businesses by mailing them propaganda about not requiring customers to wear masks at their own private business because he wants to overthrow a government he's been subjected to for less than six months. Let me just say right now that I guarantee every time that guy opens his mouth, a puppy somewhere dies. People like Carlos Zapata, who go online and publicly shame and spares local businesses for upholding mandates that have been put in place to keep people's grandparents from dying. And they fire this guy because he acts of violence on local citizens. That's a cult reviled and I get her husband. They're useless because some sport in the culture kicks her off for being a Karen. Let me remind you that Vessel Elderviny Johnson's own relative was diagnosed with Down syndrome and COVID has a 10x higher chance of being lethal to individuals with Down syndrome. That's totally what Jesus would do, right? The last thing I want to say is that we are not afraid that thousands of people in this town with the same mindset as me, who do not give a damn that Trump-supporting anti-masked citizens who drive over-concentrating vehicles and go with their multiple ways to spell the word "your" have done, because we have them too. We're not afraid to come out and speak at these meetings like they do every week and screech their nonsense. We simply don't want to breathe the same air as them. If we're the same reason Biden got more votes. So, board of supervisors, please continue doing your jobs and, like I said, stop allowing the opinion of non-hypothetic bullies to influence your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, here, let me try to play the public comment again here.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Lisa from the cloud of Shasta County, resident, living here in Redding, California. And I am all for staying with the guidelines. I think that it made a big difference in a lot of people getting sick. The super spreaders are the ones that are going to be more vocal. You know, a lot of people don't even think this is real. A lot of people I've talked to, I've been isolating, unfortunately, I'm losing my place. Remember, it was written to me and it's not past housing standards, I'm scared to death. I'm 53 years old, I've got COPD, I've got a few other health issues. I'm going to get sick and die here and I don't want that. I have a daughter out in Las Vegas and I'm scared to death to even go out there and see because, of course, Las Vegas has a lot more people coming in and out of the area than Redding, California does and, you know, and I don't want to get sick. I don't want to get sick and die. I think we should keep on, keep it on like we've been keeping on. It's not hurting anything. In fact, I think it's helping. The things are open and just imagine how many people would be getting sick. Police is curtailing the line of people that you have at the hospital with the sickness. I mean, we don't have masks outside the hospital yet like New York had in March. We need to remember what happened in February and March. We do not want a recount of that, I'm certain of it. Thank you for your time.
My name is Sandra Wiley and my phone number is 530-222-0126. And I just want to know when things are just going to start being forced around here as far as masks and distancing? Because I have been home for five months. I've only been out four times because I'm 73 years old and I'm scared to go anywhere. Because all you read about is all these places that are not following the rules and I want somebody to do something about it. Either tell them to follow the rules or shut down. I mean, it's their choice because I don't want to die and I don't want to see any more people die in this county. And somebody needs to step up to the plate and start doing something about this. It is totally, totally out of hand and I'm scared to death to do anything. So, please, will you guys get together and get something worked out and take care of this? Thank you very much. Goodbye.
My name is Michelle Cruz and I am calling in regards to the COVID meeting on Tuesday. I find it truly appalling the behavior of a lot in Zapata. We have two terrorists in our community and I hope you won't buckle as they incite violence against our community. It's your job to stand up and ensure every citizen is safe and free of harm. Is it legal for someone to knowingly pass on HIV? Is it illegal to spit on someone due to the health risks? COVID has killed how many in our community? How many people are going to have financial battle due to repercussion of the lasting effects of their bodies from COVID? The BOF needs to think long and hard how Shasta County should be financially responsible to these families. If you neglect to protect the citizens. We will all agree that we're tired of COVID, but it's here and we need to be responsible in dealing with it. We all have been financially devastated by this. I probably have had to push my credit card debt to the side. Right now, it's about food and housing. I've worked in Shasta County for over 20 years. In the last few months, I've been shut, bit, and cursed at, threatened. This is not acceptable behavior and if you continue to spoil, misbehave, laugh, that makes you accepting their violence. I for one will make you financially responsible if I'm hurt or I catch COVID due to your job and protect our community from death. Manson never killed anyone, but he's set life in prison for inciting violence. This needs to end.
Hello, this is Virginia Yee. I'm calling to urge the supervisors to be very conservative about reopening things in the county. It's so important that we stop this virus. We don't want more people to die. Please, don't be rash and quickly open everything and cause more illness. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sally and I'm just calling to say that I think Shasta County Board of Supervisors is doing a really good job. There's no manual for this COVID-19 disease that's going around and it's killing so many Americans. And I understand the harm it does to businesses, but if everybody would just put on their mask and do social distancing, our numbers would be a whole lot lower. I'm tired of people not doing what they're supposed to do, what they're told to do, what's mandated to be done to protect yourselves and your neighbors and other citizens and then crying at the last minute and having a big revolt about, "No, no, no, this is against the Constitution, this is against our rights, this is against our businesses." What a bunch of baloney. Grow up, people. Be adults. Take care of yourself. Take care of your neighbor. Take care of your community members. And businesses could stay open if they cautiously would do what they're supposed to do. Doesn't matter what you believe, whether you think the masks are helping or they're not helping. That's not the issue. The issue is to put it on, to protect, to reduce our numbers so that the businesses can continue to be open. Don't blame it on the board of supervisors in the county for closing everything down. Blame it on those who are not following the rules, not taking precautions. Board of supervisors, my hat is off to you. You've got big things on your plate. God bless you. Take care.
Hello, my name is Greg Brogley. I received an email from Shasta County Business Alliance. They are calling to ask people to stage a reopen Shasta County from COVID restrictions and I am calling to say, please don't do that. Please don't listen to these people as the number of cases are growing. 25% since last week, according to IBM AI, Laura Watson AI information. Please listen to scientists and other healthcare professionals and listen to the California regulations or whatever things they have in mind. These people are ridiculous if they're asking to reopen Shasta County in the middle of a pandemic, in the middle of the worst time of season for a respiratory virus like this. So, yeah, that is my call. Thank you for your time listening to this.
Hello, I'm calling in regard to shutting down Shasta County. I believe you should shut down and do it now. People don't need to die just so that some business can stay open. It's a waste of human life to stay open. It's a risk and a danger and it is unacceptable and I don't. There are people committed to the best, there are rich people who think they have to have these businesses open. So, it's a really disgusting thing, the family of feeling. My wife works there and we want to shut down.
Hi, my name is Richard McFarland and I'm calling to urge the board of supervisors to take as many and as aggressive and urgent actions to prevent the spread of coronavirus as possible. There's a campaign right now going around urging the supervisors to reopen business as usual. And, you know, based on basic public health and the state of the pandemic in our country right now, going back to business as usual at this time would be an absolutely foolish, dangerous, and misguided way to approach things. So, please, you know, let's follow the science. Let's be careful and urge people to wear masks, social distance. You know, we all want to get back to doing business as usual, but we can't do that if we're killing each other. Thanks.
Hi, this is Rachel Smith and I'm calling about the COVID restrictions. We need to continue having them. I have a son who is 25, is profoundly disabled. If he gets it, he will die. There is no other option. He cannot breathe well on that. So, I keep trying to do what I can to limit it because I still see people not wearing masks. I still see people just going about their daily business like there's nothing wrong when in reality, they could be killing my kid. We need to think about all the other people who have family members that could die. We need to not be selfish and give of ourselves and give to our fellow man. Thank you.
Hi, I just wanted to say that I think it's incredibly important for the Shasta county to comply with state guidance on how to keep people safe from COVID-19. It's not too much to ask to wear masks, to stay socially distant. It's really the minimum we can do. Like, it's incredibly important we do that. Businesses comply, people wear masks, stay socially distant when you can. Thanks, bye.
I am calling you to encourage continuing compliance with state guidelines regarding COVID-19. And for the record, I am a resident of Shasta County. Vladislav Davidson, his social media is encouraging non-residents to call in, but please keep that in mind when reviewing comments from public. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nathan Blaze and I'm calling in in regards to the COVID mandates and I want to know what the county is going to do with those mandates. So, you guys got to understand that just because of people that show up there and screech at you guys and spew all their fake Facebook science that they don't know anything about, want to reopen things, people like this Vladislav Davidson guy, that guy, whenever that guy opens his mouth, I swear to God, a puppy dies somewhere. People like him are not the loudest majority. The silent majority are the people like me who don't want to show up in person because we don't want to deal with these people screeching and screaming all of their garbage nonsense, speaking all over the microphone, refusing to wear masks, acting like COVID isn't a hoax. I had COVID, it was not a hoax. A friend of mine recently died, her father died at Mercy Medical Center. He had COVID complications, not a hoax. And people like this, Carlos Zapata, Vladislav Davidson, basically anybody with that same mindset, Sally Reposa, her husband, those people are just loud. That's all they are. Do not let yourselves, please, force supervisors. Do not make the mistake of thinking that they speak for the majority of people and that they are in the right somehow. Look how sure that they thought that they were going to win the presidential election because they think that everybody has the same mindset as them. And we do not. They do not. So, stop. Please, stop listening to these people.
Hi, my name is Rachel Davis. I am a resident of Shasta County and I'm calling to express my support for compliance with the California guidelines for COVID. Our numbers are out of control and we definitely cannot afford to open up at this point. Thank you. Bye.
Hi, I'm Karen Solomon at the UL, M-O-L-M. And I am completely opposed to being non-compliant with the state restrictions to COVID-19 closures. I think that if we would buckle down and do this correctly.
I'm calling to request and insist, actually, that the Shasta County Board of Supervisors uphold public health mandates and enforce them. Period. I am asking that the Shasta County Board of Supervisors uphold its oath to protect the citizens of Shasta County in this health emergency. Period. I insist that Shasta County Board of Supervisors hold businesses and individuals responsible for not following public health mandates and in turn endangering the public health. Period. The Shasta County Board of Supervisors must act to prevent our hospitals from being overrun and our healthcare workers from becoming sick and dying. Period. It is not acceptable to continue to ignore this situation that has spun out of control. Period. I would like to ask that the Shasta County Board of Supervisors enact and enforce a system of fines to help businesses feel the need to stay in compliance with the law. To do otherwise is tantamount to reckless endangerment and, in my opinion, could be considered assault and even murder.
Yes, my name is Nada Brady. I live in Bellevista, California. Born and bred in Shasta County. Retired schoolteacher. My husband and I are officially canceling our trip to New York City on Sunday because of the COVID levels in California and Shasta County. Not because of New York levels, because they are taking the pandemic seriously. I am angry that I don't get to see my grandson after nine months because of irresponsible residents of our state and county, including Bethel School of Supernatural Ministry students, end quote, and their leaders, which have sacrificed the health and well-being of the community for their own profit. I would like to thank the supervisors that are taking this seriously. Obviously, I'm excluding you, Mr. Boss. And for those residents in the county that refuse to wear masks, I am hoping that they survive the remainder of the pandemic since they're probably also going to not get a vaccine. I guess maybe I should extend that to hope they survive through 2021. I guess I'll end this by saying that I'm angry, I'm furious. We don't need to be in this position right now and it's because of the vocal minority that we are having to deal with this. Again, still, especially at this horrible, horrible level of cases. Thank you. I hope you all have a great Thanksgiving. I want to urge the Shasta County Board of Supervisors to comply with California state guidelines for coronavirus safety. The increased spread of this virus in Shasta County is completely unacceptable. We must acknowledge and accept the recommendations of health professionals and not the rhetoric and selfish denial of the seriousness of this spread by angry individuals who lack personal responsibility and common sense. Thank you for this opportunity to express my feelings without having to risk infection by attending your meeting in person.
My name is Tracy Roberti and I am calling in regards to Shasta County deciding about whether or not we should follow the COVID mandates. And I think if you look at the numbers nationwide and you look at the numbers in California, California has the highest population of any state, but there are 28 states who have higher death rates than California. So, agree or disagree with Gavin Newsom, that's fine, but he's keeping us alive with these mandates and we need to follow them as best we can. Limit numbers of groups, wear masks and social distancing. It's three very simple things that people can do to help keep us alive. And I hope that you, as public leaders, embrace that and help spread that message instead of the message of dissent and war. That's the last thing we need right now, is dissent and war. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Sarah Naploski and I am a nurse practitioner in Shasta County. I am calling with comments in regard to the COVID-19 and adhering to state guidelines. I think it's imperative. I personally have been out of work since the 18th of October due to COVID and I think it's really necessary to take into account our actions and their impacts on other people's safety and health. So, I think that we should be adhering to the laws and the mandates for the sake of our fellow man. Thank you.
Hi, this is Karen Hoffenstein. I'm calling regarding COVID guidelines. I urge you to follow the state new state guidelines and to put some consequences in place for those who refuse to. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Amber Crater and I am calling on Shasta Regional Medical Center. We do not have enough TPDs for everyone. We're reusing masks and gowns and I think that we need more and we also need more staff to be safe.
Hi, my name is Amanda Johnson and I'm a local resident. I want to express my concern about the county taking stronger actions to ensure our safety regarding COVID. I'd like to see businesses be required to comply. I'd like to see this be taken seriously by all of our board members and our local government to ensure the safety of all of us. If you could take them into consideration, I'd greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi, this is Tiffith. I own a business and I'm being contacted by the take action, the open Shasta County now. I fully disagree with this. I want you guys to do safety first. I do not want to have it open and spreading COVID and having this where it's playing our community and going on longer and longer. I've had it with this kind of mindset. End the COVID, close sit-ups, do what we need to do and get control of winter. They already menace with people walking around. And when my husband up to complain to a manager, she was unmasked and an employee came up unmasked. We had to go through a huge group of 20 people who were unmasked and I talked to a store employee who was frightened about the unmasking and they're not allowed to discuss it. It's ridiculous. If we got control, everything could be open. Just behave and get control. Stay calm. I appreciate it. Thank you.
This is in regards to COVID for the meeting on Monday, November 17. I'm a resident of Shasta County for 42 years and I'm also a registered nurse. So, I'm very concerned about and invested in our community's health. I'd also like to say for the record that I am not a member of any socialist party in Shasta County. I'll start by saying thank you to everyone in our community who is doing their part to keep others safe. You know who you are and understanding the community is proud of you. But the real reason I'm calling to speak to those of you who aren't doing their part, I am very disturbed by the increase in positive COVID cases and equally disturbed by the lack of enforcement demonstrated by our county when it comes to the guidelines set forth by the state of California. I don't know if anyone else has noticed, but our hospitalized COVID patients have tripled in the last couple of weeks and our numbers go up every day. Hospitalizations lag behind the positive cases. Our hospitalizations are going to keep going up if our numbers don't go down. It's a fact. Our healthcare system can only handle so much. What do you think will happen in a few weeks when our hospitals are full? Do you think extra nurses are going to materialize magically to care for the influx in patients? No, that won't be what happens. What will happen is there will be exhausted nurses taking on extra duties in patients, which will directly lead to an increase in poor quality of care, which will lead to an increase in the likelihood of death. What is the cause for the increase in patients? Well, from what I can see when I dare to venture out into our community is there is a severe lack in compliance with the mask mandate. There is severe lack in enforcement of the mandates within our businesses and there are people here who openly believe that their lives are more important than the lives of our vulnerable citizens. And by vulnerable, I mean anybody with a pre-existing condition, which is about 43% of the population here in Shasta County. By vulnerable, I also mean people like our nana's and papa's who have lived here 60, 70, 80 plus years, their entire lives. These are the people who are dying and who are suffering the most with the effects of COVID. Do you know what some people are saying about the vulnerable who die here? They are saying that the deaths in our county are the price paid for the freedoms of others. Did you hear that? I don't care what side you're on, Wesley, that is wrong. Shasta County, you are getting played. Don't buy into this foolishness. You are so much better than this. Please, care about each other. Care about the businesses who are doing their part to keep you safe. Frequent those businesses and speak up in support of them. Care about your friends. Care about people who aren't your friends. Care about the vulnerable. Do what is right and please just start caring about others.
Yes, my name is Gary R. Ford. I am calling regarding your meeting tomorrow on the COVID-19 restrictions and shutdowns. Look, guys, your duty is to protect the entire community, not just business leaders and business owners. Your job is to protect all of us for the good of the entire community. For the good of this community, your job in this case is to follow the science and our governor's recommendations. Okay? We have real science. Enforce the mask rules. Period. Bars and restaurants, sorry, you got to go. Your beef is with the federal government and the Trump administration for not providing you the funding that they need to survive this. Period. It's not your job as the city. Your job is to do what is good for the entirety of Redding. The business owner's job is to comply and then file for dollars from the federal government. Their beef is with the Trump administration for failure to provide adequate funding so they could close and not worry about paying their bills. The other issue is, if you don't, you are opening the city of Redding up to so many class action lawsuits. I tell you, anybody that gets sick and it's related back to a business that you let stay open, I'm going to advise every client I talk to to file suit. Your job again is to protect the citizens of this community. Okay? Please, enforce the current rules. Please, enforce the current rules so more people in your community, our friends, our neighbors, our loved ones, don't die. Got that? Your failure to act is killing fellow citizens. Stop listening to non-scientists, churches, and business leaders. Listen to real scientists, experts in epidemiology, and do the right thing. Close this freaking city down. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ed Merrick. I live in Shasta County. I'd just like to finish up here then with a, a few important points I don't think are clear enough in terms of our current situation. I'm sorry, my feed just started. There goes. Uh, first off, this is COVID season. It's a very different disease now than it was over the last nine months. All over the northern hemisphere, it is exploding, and it has just started to explode in Shasta County. The second point is, as some other callers mentioned, we're only a few months away from having a vaccine, which will offer protection from the disease. What we have to do now is stay alive for the next few months. Stay uninfected and stay alive. And to do that, each of you has a responsibility to not only accept the state social distancing guidelines, these so-called purple guidelines, but to enforce them. Enforce them to action by the board, to see if they have police agencies, write tickets, close illegal businesses that are in violation of the standards, and keep us from getting this disease over the next few months. Now, I want to point out that I think a lot of you probably realize already, you are going to do this. The only real question is whether you wait a few more weeks until dozens or perhaps hundreds of more people die, thousands of more people are infected. We have the headlines you're seeing now from the rest of the country of refrigerated morgue trucks and, uh, hospital patients stuck in hallways. Or you could act sooner. You can show the courage to act sooner and prevent those infections and deaths. I really hope you'll do that. Thanks for your time.
Good morning, Board. It's Alyssa. Um, I am calling this morning, uh, for a couple of reasons. But first, I want to respond to your other live caller, Nathan. Um, I do want to address the fact that Antifa or Antifa is from Wikipedia, um, a group that aims to achieve their objectives through both non-violent and violent direct action rather than through policy reform. So, that is something to be concerned about, and if you guys have not looked into it, I recommend that. Second, I'm wondering if we are just calling in during public comments to complain about other community members, and is that within the scope of the Board? Because that's a lot of what we just heard. Moving off of that topic, I want to speak to Seat Seven, Ford Reading Foundation. So, this is a foundation that was created to distribute funds from the CARES funding to our small businesses. I know that they are receiving in their contract up to five percent of, uh, the amount given to them. I'm hoping that you address that today, because our small businesses in this county need every single dime of that CARES money. If you remember a few months ago, when we addressed this before, we asked you, as it was an R1 issue, to give small businesses not three million dollars, not four million dollars, but closer to half of the nineteen million dollars that we received from the federal government that day. It was pushed through by Supervisor Modi at four million dollars, I believe. Now, you guys are coming back to give them another million, I see up to four. I would like them to at least be ten million dollars, if not more. Take care of our small businesses. Our governor has just shut down the county again in purple, which we are not leaving, and you all know that, until January at least. Um, while he meanwhile has gone to a birthday party at French Laundry, he is an absolute aristocrat, and we need to stop adhering to these Atonine rules that he is imposing on us. It's absolutely unconstitutional, and he is showing that by his own violation of the rules. Also, it's extremely important to know that his case is right, deaths are not. We had ten new deaths total in California yesterday. That's a point one percent increase from the day prior. Now, I know you don't care about facts and data, because otherwise you would have opened the county. Please, listen to your constituents and open the county. Now, don't make us wait until January. You guys, the World Health Organization said just, uh, two days ago, I want to be straight with you, there will be no return to the old normal for the foreseeable future. We are not going back to normal from a higher power. We have to take local control, which you have been gifted. You have the power.
Alyssa, that was three minutes.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
To have the strip clubs open before churches is absolutely ridiculous. Please open Shasta County and let us go on with our lives and our businesses thriving. Thank you.
Um, you're killing us in a different way than COVID. You've got to open up. You're killing our businesses. This is a nothing burger for kids. You are destroying them, so please, open up. It makes no medical sense whatsoever. The flu is, uh, a bigger killer for kids, and we did not shut down for the flu. Do we? Use your, use your minds, people. Open up. Thank you.
Please keep Shasta County open. I believe that anybody who is concerned about their health and well-being can be responsible for their own health and take precautions. And as we, um, make sure our office is safe and disinfected at all times, we do not need to be shut down and controlled like this. Let's just make Shasta County alive and keep businesses open. Thank you so much. Bye.
Yeah, stop killing our jobs. You guys need to open up Shasta County. We're tired of it. We're gonna start revolting. You guys gotta get this place open. I'm only, I'm only gonna visit places that are open. I'm not gonna visit places that are closed. You guys are killing those businesses. Stop it.
Good morning, Supervisors. Your favorite Shasta County citizen activist, Flashpot Davidson, here to congratulate Mr. Morgan on his election loss. That's one socialist down, and we have four more left to topple. Big talk. Hopefully, Mr. Lawyer has advised you of the hundreds of separate public record act requests that he filed with his office. That figure will write literally tens of thousands over the next few months. I am initiating a full-scale audit of your little COVID-19 pension scam fraud. While we're at it, consider this a formal CPRA request for each of your emails and any tweets, comments, and any other staff or supervisor staff for this year that discussed COVID-19 response. Separately, please provide new results communications this year with Jake Mangus, Mike Mangus, and the Chamber of Commerce. For that matter, give me communications with HHS and URIT as a separate request between supervisors and those people. My question today is this. Why in the world are you paying for a writing foundation that is the Chamber of Commerce a hundred fifty thousand dollars to cut checks of five thousand to local businesses? When you went from three hundred thousand to three million, the effort compensation went from fifteen thousand to a hundred fifty thousand for the very same task. Why is that? This account is seriously incapable of dating books, you think? How much of that money is going directly into Jake Mangus' pocket? Consider this a public records request for any records related. Several weeks ago, I asked my favorite Shasta County job scaler, Mr. Schimanti, how many businesses in his district have closed? Do we have an answer to that question yet? Because I actually do have a running list now, and each of those closures will be attributed to your active, Mr. Schimanti. Give me all the records related to business closures. That's another CPRA on you, Schimanti. Have a good day.
This is Mark Kidd, and I want to comment on the lockdowns and the, and the elevated care system. You guys need to start doing what's right. You guys need to stop killing the jobs. You're killing the county. Uh, with all of this, uh, um, you know, unverified, uh, COVID, uh, trumped-up bill, uh, that, uh, there is no death count. Uh, it's the flu. You guys are killing the county over the flu. You know, you, you, you know, we're supposed to all be locked down, and we're supposed to, to, to stay home, and we're supposed to not social distance. And you got a governor that is issuing these orders, having parties, lavish parties apologizing for not following the law, breaking the rules. But all the rest of us are dying on the line out here because you guys are taking away our sources of income. While you sit in your ivory towers, uh, basically collecting your salary, collecting your benefits, collecting all your benefits, what are you, you guys are killing the goose that lays the gold eggs. You need to wake up and do the right thing here and do what's right for the people. Quit worrying about what's right for you, uh, personally, and what's right for, you know, your pockets, and what's right for the people that are getting the, the, the big money from all of these payoffs that you're receiving from the governor to basically, you know, uh, go against the people and do whatever they want you to do. Because who are you guys working for? That is all I have to say, and, uh, you guys better wake up and smell the coffee because you're out of here as soon as possible.
Hello, my name is Lori. I'm calling from Shasta County, and this is for, uh, public comment for the, uh, Board of Supervisors meeting that is now virtual. Uh, please open this county once and for all. This is absolutely abusive. The reason people are getting ill and sick is the common way. Uh, not to mention people that have been wearing masks for many, many, many months, and they're, uh, damaging and impacting their immune system and blood oxygen levels. This is going to make people more susceptible to any flu. Uh, so, just, just starting with that. Uh, also, uh, the media briefings that happened on Wednesdays, I would ask that Dr. Ramstrom and Donnell Ewer, please start explaining all of these, uh, issues regarding, um, uh, the, the, the obvious. Of, uh, uh, CDC has had to walk back so many times, uh, the data, the death counts, uh, the coding is bogus. I mean, these hospitals, all three of them here in the county have been participating in, uh, this, this, uh, manufactured fraudulent, uh, paperwork. The cases are from a PCR test, which is not meant to be diagnostic. Please address this Karen and Donnell. This whole documentation with the, uh, interim playbook, the CDC, they're targeting K through, uh, twelve children. The churches are gonna be used. So, they can what? Hand out food, and then, oh, here we're gonna give you a test? Maybe even vaccinate later down the road? This is absolutely getting unbelievable. I would also have, uh, an appreciation if they would discuss and cover the, um, Model State Emergency Health Powers Act. I'll repeat, Model State Emergency Health Powers Act. And that has to do with bioterrorism from nine eleven, and it gives, uh, uh, health, state health officials a lot of power, something I'm not really thrilled about having based on the Conductive Behavior Act seen in the past year. I do not want anyone to force, examine people, vaccinate, medicate, uh, take their property, and do all these other things. This is a civil liberties violation. There's no system of checks and balances, and this goes beyond public, uh, uh, party affiliation. This is, uh, civil rights abuses if this is gonna be happening here. I'm, I'm very unhappy with the closures, um, that we're seeing. We're starting to feel very much avoided. We never get a town hall. And we will be visiting Public Health, and, uh, we'll be doing our, uh, open mic, uh, for open minds, or we'll have rallies and protests as needed because we are fed up. Open this county like the other ones have. And the flu shots are also making people sick. There's what? Seven, eight different flu shots? What's the one? Four times the ads against for the elders, the flu ads? Right, like, we need that. How's that gonna help anyone? Clean is open this county, and you'll relieve yourself of a lot of stress.
Exercise, exercise, exercise. COVID-19 will be understood as exercise. The goal is to vaccinate the whole community, particularly children. This is a whole community integration exercise. Everyone is at play. Individual exercises are required: mask-wearing, social distancing, stay-at-home orders, flu vaccination mandates, care system, et cetera. Continuous evaluation of community response and compliance is necessary. Refer to CDC COVID-19 Vaccination Program interim playbook for jurisdiction operations and Homeland Security Exercise and Evaluation Program to assist in your exercise planning. Utilize crisis and emergency risk communication principles. Be first, be right, be credible, express empathy, show respect. This is a vital element to whole community integrated exercises. Using these principles will help develop strengths and minimize weaknesses when the COVID-19 vaccines arise. Pandemic must be convincing. This will be accomplished by a required daily CPR testing quota. COVID-19 exercises will only be terminated when a sufficient majority of the population is vaccinated, with the emphasis on vaccinating children. The only immunity that the COVID-19 vaccination campaign will truly offer is immunity from liability. That's right. Everyone that is an accomplice to the murder or assault of children will be a hundred percent covered by the PREP Act. There's no insurance, for instance, policy that compares. Did a child become vaccine-injured by developing autism right after administration of the COVID-19 vaccine? It doesn't matter because PREP Act has you covered. Did a child get paralyzed soon after receiving the vaccine? Who cares? PREP Act has your back. Does a child have a surprise autoimmune disorder? Other serious reactions or die as a result of this urgent vaccine? It's okay. PREP Act is here for you. Did you participate in the mass child genocide of 2021 due to COVID-19 vaccine? You're in luck and backed up by PREP Act. Just make sure that you don't intentionally harm the child. At least make it appear that way for the sake of the PREP Act. This exercise is a mega ritual to the God of the saints, Satan. All proceeds go towards him. Liability may not ever be a factor in this life, but you can count on being liable when you meet your maker on Judgment Day. Beware of the second death, in which your soul will have no further resurrection. All wickedness will not be tolerated in God's kingdom and will be consumed in the lake of fire. Repent now and cry out to God.
Dear Shasta County Board of Supervisors, my name is Ian Smart. I'm calling today to remind you that you work for us. Your blind allegiance to our dictator governor has proven over and over that you do not represent your county's best interests. And like the incompetent Steve Morgan, your constituents will pick off your seats one by one till your reign of communism is through. This board has aligned itself with every tyrannical order set forth by Gavin Newsom, who was recently slapped down for overstepping his authority. Long overdue that you put the people you represent needs above the political power play that is COVID-19. And open the damn county. Your compliance is crippling our businesses. Your compliance is bankrupting our families. It becomes perfectly obvious that you all are extremely out of touch with the people of our county as you sit in your half-million-dollar homes and govern us peasants into poverty. You took the CARE Act bribe of eighteen million dollars and gave businesses a mere three million of that money while funneling fifteen million into an already overfunded Health and Human Services. Shasta County is awake to this crap you're pulling, and we will stand for this corruption no longer. Open the county. Pledge your allegiance to the people who elected you to office. Joe, you spineless wimp. We are done with the state's purple tier and will support every business that defies your unconstitutional Gestapo tactic. Open the county.
I'm ready. I'm ready now. Okay. Hello, my name is Karen Stamer, and I'm sure that you, all of you, remember the Waterworks Park speech. Yeah, that didn't work out so well. So, I'll be speaking on the map. I am homeschooled, and I don't have to wear a mask, but other kids do. I'm not dumb, but I know that masks don't work. TCS has called a lot of numbers, and why are we focusing on cases, not deaths? I know about Democrats and Republicans. I know about the Constitution. And I know about, I know about the right is right, looting and burning is wrong. I know that the left is for B.O. and Antifa. Dr. Karen Ramstrom is pushing masks. She has blocked steps with Gavin Newsom. They are leftist. We all know that. Let's go. It's the only one here with some sense, and that is coming from a kid. Look, please change your mind. I am a Christian. I don't want to wear a mask. I'm twelve and white, and I'm sure everyone else agrees that this is wrong, but we need to take an emergency vote. Thank you, Mr. Ball, for having some common sense. Thank you, Mr. Baugh, for having some common sense. And by the way, isn't something wrong when the social group of Redding supports Modi and Schimanti, which is for burning, looting, and rioting? A left [inaudible]. In fact, I believe that they don't know a thing about black lives. Good ones about that! Again, thank you, Mr. Baugh, for having some not very common sense. Thank you.
Hi, this is Monty Apple, 695. I've seen Thomas Parkway written in the Redding, California the last, uh, six years, and I wanted to, um, say stop killing our jobs. I'm asking you to copy, like, Placer County and cities of Atwater and Imperial, redoning, and immediately reopen our businesses.
Hi, um, my name's David. I was calling, uh, to ask you to stop killing the jobs here in Shasta County and to open up this all the stores that have been shut down, places of business, help people to get back to work. Um, I'm asking you to copy Placer County, Atwater, Imperial, cities. Immediately reopening our businesses. We cannot afford to continue to destroy businesses and jobs. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Stop killing our jobs and our economy. Copy Placer County and others, Atwater, and open up our cities now.
My name is Margie Baugh. I'm a registered voter in Shasta County. Stop killing our economy. Please copy Placer County along with the cities of Atwater and Imperial by immediately opening Shasta County businesses. We cannot continue to destroy businesses and jobs.
Hi, my name is Carol Pepper, and I'm just calling to say, stop killing our jobs. I'm asking you to copy Placer County and cities of Atwater and Imperial and im- and immediately reopening our businesses. We cannot afford to continue to destroy businesses and jobs any longer. Thank you and have a good day.
Stop killing our jobs. I'm asking you to copy Placer County and cities of Atwater and Imperial and immediately reopening our businesses. We cannot afford to continue as we are. That you would stop killing the jobs here in Redding. I'm asking you to copy Placer County and the cities of Atwater and Imperial and immediately, now, immediately reopening our businesses.
Connor Bailey, stop killing our jobs. I'm asking you to copy Placer County and cities of Atwater and Imperial and immediately reopening our businesses. We cannot afford to continue to destroy our businesses and jobs.
And I was calling to request formally that, um, the county reopen and follow the example of Placer County and the cities of Atwater and Imperial. Um, I believe it's killing jobs and hurting the economy the way things are going. I want you to stop killing our jobs. I'm asking you to copy Placer County and cities of Atwater and Imperial and immediately reopening our businesses. We cannot afford to continue to destroy businesses and jobs. Please stop killing our jobs. I'm asking you to copy Placer County and cities of Atwater and Imperial and immediately reopening our businesses. We cannot afford to continue to destroy businesses and jobs.
Um, I would just, um, ask that you would copy Placer County and the cities of Atwater and Imperial and immediately reopening our businesses.
Please stop killing our jobs. I'm asking you to copy Placer County and the cities of Atwater and Imperial and immediately reopen our businesses. We can't afford to continue to destroy small businesses and jobs. As a local accountant in town, I'm telling you, this is a very serious issue.
Stop killing our jobs. I'm asking you to copy Placer County and cities of Atwater and Imperial immediately. We cannot afford to continue to destroy businesses and jobs.
It's time to show the people of Shasta County that you will support our business community by following the lead of the courageous leaders of Placer County and the city of Atwater by immediately lifting the arbitrary and illegal restrictions on our businesses. Otherwise, you will be known as the Board who is responsible for destroying the vital businesses that all of us depend on here in Shasta County. Thank you.
Please stop killing our jobs. I'm asking you to copy Placer County and the cities of Atwater and Imperial and immediately reopening our businesses. We cannot afford to continue to destroy businesses and jobs.
I'd like to make a comment is, and I have before me a copy of the Placer County, uh, resolution. It's Resolution Number 2020-194, and I've- I've read portions of it before at a board meeting, and I just want, um, to share with the public that, um, maybe they weren't aware, but the Placer County Board of Supervisors, uh, when I spoke to one of the supervisors, he said it was simply a symbolic resolution, and that they, uh, the last, second to last paragraph says that be resolved by the Board of Supervisors, County of Placer, State of California, the state of emergency, and the state's stay-at-home requirements and other health requirements as directed in gubernatorial executive order N3320 and subsequent executive orders or statutes in all California Department of Public Health orders, directives, and guidance remain in effect. So basically, Placer County is continuing to follow their- the tier system. And I also have a resolution. It's Resolution Number 52. I also spoke with the, um, city manager of Imperial, uh, the city of Imperial, and I wanna point out that when you talk about Imperial, it's the city of Imperial and the city of- of Atwater. It's not the counties that have passed resolutions. But I did talk to the city manager of Imperial, and she was very clear, and if you read their resolution too, it doesn't say anything about defying state orders. So I just wish that, um, people would understand that, and- and just for the record, uh, Placer County has a population of 398,329 people. As of today, they have 8,965 cases. Imperial County is very similar to Shasta County, has 181,215 people, uh, that live there. They have 11,100 cases. And Merced County, where Atwater is, has a population of 277,680 people, and they have 10,313 cases. And I think that those are indicators that we need to- to continue to take this very seriously, uh, and we need to protect one another, and we need to adhere to the guidelines. And it's as- it's as simple as that. If- if we're going to get out of this, we need to try and protect each other. Because these are- these counties have quote-unquote tried to basically, uh, relax their standards, and they have quite a few more cases than we do, and we don't wanna go there. So any other comments?